All right, Tuesday, May 24th, regular business meeting for the city council, we're going to call it to order. Pursuant to proclamation 202815 issued by Governor Jay Inslee, we are still in a hybrid meeting format, so those can attend in person or remotely via Zoom. Ms. Wykoff, can we call the roll?
Thank you. Council members present and establishing a quorum are council members Foulter, Kenny Hanford, Davis, Gamble, Fisher, and Scarborough. Please note for the record that Councilmember Fisher is attending remotely.
All right, I see Councilmember Fisher. Thank you. All right, next item of business, pledge allegiance, allegiance, Councilmember Hanford. All right, first item of business is public comment. This time is set aside for members of the public to speak to the city council on any issue related to the city of Monroe, except any quasi judicial matter subject to a public hearing. Three minutes will be allowed per speaker. If you're attending the meeting virtually using the link number or provided above, please indicate that you would like to speak by clicking on the raise hand, and we will call on attendees that wish to speak. If you're joining by phone, dial nine to raise your hand. Do we have anybody that would like to speak to the city council tonight? And I cannot see the queue, so I'm going to rely on you guys to tell me if anybody is raising their hands in the virtual environment. Going once, going twice. All right. Next item of business is the consent agenda. Councilmember Hanford.
I move to approve the consent agenda as listed.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hamburg and seconded by Councilmember Kenny to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstained? Passes unanimously, seven zero. I saw Councilmember, or Kyle, yep, gotcha. All right, new business, first item of new business, six dot one, confirm appointment, the salary commission, Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Gamble and council. The scene name before you is an appointment to the salary commission. You may recognize the applicant's name, Ms. Gina Pfister. The mayor and Mr. Christian did conduct an interview after receiving the application, and the mayor is requesting confirmation of Ms. Pfister's appointment to the salary commission.
All right, council. Councilmember Foulter.
I would like to go ahead and make a move to approve mayor's appointment of Gina Pfister to the salary commission, position five, a vacant seat with the term ending 12/31/2024.
Right, been moved by Councilmember Foulter, seconded by Councilmember Hanford. Any discussion on the motion? Thing, I just would like to thank you for stepping forward on this, yes. It's great to have the contribution, so all those in favor? Abstained? All right, passes seven zero. Thank you. Next item of new business would be six dot two, ordinance amending Monroe Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, council meeting minutes, or meeting, council meetings, Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening again. This item before you is to amend Chapter 2.04 of the Monroe Municipal Code for council meetings. It's updating and clarifying the physical location, remote participation, and holiday rescheduling requirements for meetings. And the reason we are asking council to waive procedures and adopt upon first reading is because House Bill 1329, as you know, it amends certain portions of the Open Public Meetings Act, and that goes into effect on June 9th. And then also Governor Inslee's resolution, resolution related, or proclamation.
Proclamation.
Thank you. Related to public meetings is being rescinded effective June 1st. And with a lack of, the next business meeting won't be until June 14th, so we are asking council to, if they're amenable to it, to waive their procedures and adopt this evening, and I am available for questions.
You're right, any questions? Councilmember Hanford.
I move to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of ordinances and allow adoption of an ordinance upon first reading.
Right, it has been moved by Councilmember Hanford, seconded by Councilmember Foulter to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of ordinances allowing adoption of an ordinance upon first. All those in favor? Those opposed? Staying? Motion passes seven zero. Councilmember Kenny.
I move to adopt ordinance 0152022, amending Chapter 2.04 MMC Council Meetings, updating and clarifying the physical location, remote participation, and holiday rescheduling requirements for meetings of the Monroe City Council, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Kenny, seconded by Councilmember Scarborough. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed abstentions, motion passes seven zero. All right. Next order of business would be ordinance 0172022, amending Monroe Municipal Code, Section 4.10, general provisions of Title IV, boards, commissions, and committees. We have the hat trick for agenda items, Ms. Wykoff.
Good evening once again. This item before you is an ordinance to amend Chapter 4.10 of the Monroe Municipal Code, which is the general provisions for all of our boards, commissions, and committees. The, the proposed language changes will do what we are doing similar to the council meetings, which is to allow for remote participation of the members and the public. We are also doing other minor edits since we were already in there doing some edits. We are adding language to support board and commission and committees formed by resolution. We're updating language related to the confirmation of members. We are update, making updates to remove references to the requirement of a physical presence of members, and updating that a majority vote constitutes a decision of board commission committees. In addition to those updates, we are also updating the official, updating that official resignation can be submitted to the mayor, city administrator, or city clerk. Originally, it said the mayor only, so just kind of cleaning up that language. And then related to meetings, we are updating language to indicate remote attendance by the public will be provided whenever feasible. And again, like I said earlier, updating to allow for remote attendance by members. As I mentioned, HB 1329, which goes into effect on June 9th. One of the things that it says in that new legislation is that any board or commission or council may have remote attendance, but it has to be in some sort of code or rules of procedure. Unlike council where you have rules of procedure that allow it, many of our boards and commissions do not have their own rules of procedure or bylaws. Therefore, doing a code amendment to the general provisions for all boards and commissions will make this a possibility for all of the members for current and future boards and commissions. Again, as I stated in the previous item, we are asking council if they're amenable to it to waive their procedures and adopt this ordinance this evening to allow for these changes to take effect before the governor's proclamation and the HB 1329 to go into effect in June. And I'm available for questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Scarborough.
4.10.030, appointment removal and vacancy. Updated language relating to confirmation of members. Can you elaborate on what that is?
Sure, let me go to the actual ordinance so I can take a look at it. So 14.10.030 subsection C stated that it was subject to the approval of council, so we just changed approval to confirmation. It's just a, it's a semantics type of change scripters, but we figured that we would clean up language because everywhere else in the code, it talks about confirming the appointment rather than approving the appointment. So we just wanted to stay consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Foulter.
Wait, okay, yes, I move to waive council rules of procedure requiring two readings of ordinances and allow adoption for an order, of an ordinance upon first reading.
Been moved by Councilmember Foulter, seconded by Councilmember Kenny. Questions? Abstentions passes seven zero. Councilmember Foulter.
I move to adopt ordinance 0172022, amending Chapter 4.10 MMC General Provisions, updating and clarifying the physical location, remote participation, meetings of the city's boards, commissions, and committees, making various housekeeping amendments to the standards and procedures governing board, commission, and committee member qualifications, vacancies, quorum requirements, and terms of service, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Foulter and seconded by none, all those in favor? Opposed abstentions, seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Wykoff. We should throw our hats out right now. All right, next up is item 64, ordinance number 0132022, amending Monroe Municipal Code MMC Title 12.36.180, variances, first reading, Mr. Roberts.
I'm red.
You're ready to go.
I'm going to follow the longest motion ever. That was three breaths worth. Good. So we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, so I've shortened up the PowerPoint just to kind of run through the main basic points again, and then talk about the one thing that was discussed amongst the council during that period of time. Again, Title 12 regulates the use of the right of way. It generally covers permitted infrastructure-based activity in that space, but also our addressing list and a few other things within Title 12. Can we get two slides, Jody, maybe? Well, one more. How about three? Perfect, there we go. Chapter 1236180 is titled variances. It was established in 1993, and it gives the council the ability to preside over the quasi judicial process by which variances are passed through by a permittee or someone who's applying for a permit that wants to do something that's a little bit outside the bounds of what Title 12 allows. So most recently, we talked about this during the Zipli fiber application, which was late last year. They came in, had something like 150 structures in the right of way. It was a bit of a different kind of animal as it was compared to what we've typically seen, and we had not gone through this various process based on my research. During my career here, I spoke with the former Public Works Director, Public Works Director Emeritus Fileberg. He did not remember using it either, so it's been quite a while. More typical within the code since 2008, chapters 1, 3, 5, 13, 14, 15, and 22, all use the hearing examiner process, which is designed for situations like this, and it is a far more efficient process as compared to having a city council proceeding and quasi judicial undertaking. Next slide, please. So I shortened up the code comparison to really focus on what we talked about at the last council meeting. Really, the definition of standing. So the second attachment, maybe the third, to this agenda bill had Attorney Lell's examples of what standing meant in relation to this specific section of code. Basically, any party with or without standing, as it currently stands, may come to the council with a variant request. In the proposed code, the party would have to have standing. So if we go to the next slide, please. So standing simplified, kind of taking a summary of what Attorney Lell wrote. The right of a party to challenge the conduct of another party in court, and only parties that have a sufficient interest in the decision granting or denying a variance have the legal ability to challenge the decision in court. So I thought the best one from the example there was the grocery store slip and fall. If you slipped and fall, if you slipped and fell, you have standing. If you read about or heard about, or maybe even were adjacent to the aisle where the person slipped and fell, you do not have standing. So you have been directly involved in the process. So, next slide, please. And if there are any discussion, I'd open it up to questions, and then also I put the motion up there on the board for you if you'd like to do that.
All right, questions? Councilmember Davis.
I have no question, but I will move to accept his first reading ordinance number 013/2022, amending Chapter 12.36 MMC Public Right-of-Way Disturbance and Restoration. Authorizing the hearing examiner to consider and issue final decisions on requests for variances from the city's public right-of-way regulations, providing for separability and establishing an effective date.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Hanford. Any questions on the motion or discussion? All those in favor? Abstentions? Kyle, I saw you were on the approval, correct? Yep, seven zero. Then, thank you, Mr. Roberts. Oh, you did. Oh, you guys all voted. Councilmember Foulter, take it back.
I just wanted to say that if someone slips and falls, I don't believe they have standing.
But I, all right, Councilmember Kenny, that was pretty good. That was worth the pause. Go ahead.
I was just going to move to accept ordinance, but someone beat me to it.
We've already done it. We're seven zero still. We're good. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. All right, next item of business. Councilmember reports, and I am just gonna, I'm gonna start online and then come down the line. So Kyle, do you have anything tonight?
Yeah, so Councilor, Councilmember Kenny and I met with Sarah Lundstrom, the new co-director of Take the Next Step. And I just kind of talked about their goals and what they want to accomplish in our city, and also to congratulate Sarah on that new position. She's, she's a neat lady, and I've worked with her long, long before I was over on the planning commissioner on council, or just some neighborhood concern. So we did that, and then Councilmember Kenny and I also, hopefully I'm not stealing all your thunder here. Met with students at Monroe High School and Mr. Tyson Horner's government class. And it was great. The kids were great. They had great questions. They had like 15 questions, I think, for us to answer. We spent about an hour in their classroom talking about just different questions they had about council and small, small city government, and it was really cool. I think sometimes if we spent our life on social media, we would think that our high school maybe is full of rotten kids. And I can say that that was not the case at all. They were great kids. They were very respectful. They were super intelligent. They had great questions, so it was, it was a really neat experience, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Scarborough.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Hanford. Councilmember. Waiting for the light. Kenny.
Okay, yes, Kyle and I had a busy couple, well, about a week, meeting with different people. It was really great. Also, I was able to attend the Monroe High School production of The Addams Family last Friday. A couple of the kids I've coached over the years were in it, and it was phenomenal. I felt like I was at the Fifth Avenue Theater. I could not believe the talent that these kids, singing, acting, the costuming and the sets. It was truly remarkable. I had a great time. I laughed. It was wonderful, and it was a packed house. So again, to echo Councilmember Fisher's comment, we've got some great stuff going on at our high school and the students there. I'm going to steal some thunder from Councilmember Foulter and report that on Saturday, we were part of the VFW, Flags for Our Fallen. We walked around Lake Tide and supported our local veterans group. And that's all I have.
Awesome. All right, Councilmember Foulter.
There we go. Okay, well, thanks. Luckily, I do have something else. So as you all know, I am the HART representative for our little group here. And there is in, in front of you, there's a letter that is for Executive Summers and Mayor Franklin regarding the HB 1590 Business Plan. They had asked for some, in the questionnaire, you know, what are, what's our thoughts on it? Ms. Knight and I went over that a couple of weeks ago, and this is the results for us. If there's anything that you want changed, attitude emphasized, anything, get ahold of me, because the next HART meeting, I actually, do you remember at this point?
June 2nd.
Okay, so it is coming up pretty quickly. So anyway, just let me know if you have any feedback. And Ms. Knight also is, is our, our author on these things, so I appreciate that. But as, as Ms. Kenny said, yes, we did the 5K on Saturday. It was beautiful weather. It was wonderful. I love our parks, and we had a great time. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Davis.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right, well, that brings it to me. So I did want to just highlight, you know, Councilmember Fisher and Kenny, that's awesome, by the way, that, you know, going and getting all those questions and serving on the Public School Foundation Board. We just got done here most recently reading a ton of college applications, and we were all blown away this year on just the, you know, on the submissions, and you know, there, it was, they were just really, really good. So there definitely is a lot of hope for the future. I mean, your comments stuck with me, like if you read on Facebook or, or whatever, there is, there's a, there's, there's quite a bit of talent up at that high school, so just echoing those comments, and then you're seeing the play, just for those, I know some have donated and contributed to the Public School Foundation, and one of the big major purchases several years ago was new sound equipment, new microphones, that type of stuff for the plays that you, that you watched. And so it's just always really cool to hear that it's, and the, the subs of the year after, they got an award, like that they, you know, they actually have a ceremony at the Fifth Avenue Theater for that, yeah. And they got like a best sound or best, you know, whatever. So anyway, that's really cool. Wants a good theater up at that side, and that's it. That's all I got. Staff Department reports. First up, we have Chief Jolly. Promoting them to panelists.
Hopefully, I've made it from the virtual world and made the transition. Good evening, Mayor Protem Gamble and council members. I have, the council report has been included in your packet. The only thing of significance in relation to some of the things that we're doing is an increase in traffic-related issues. We have had several different complaints in various parts of the city and are responding appropriately and, and performing traffic to remediate some of those issues that are popping up. I'll go ahead and skip to the last page, some of our department events. We were had the privilege, the fire chief, Kevin O'Brien and myself, of meeting the public and having some chats with local residents, and we were hosted by the Monroe Coffee Company. I believe you know the entrepreneur of that establishment. And that went really well. We were happy to get out and meet with our public. Also, you'll see on that last page that we had a get-together with Battles of the Badges, in which our police department played a softball game against the fire department. And I'm happy to report that even though it was good-natured, that the police department represented the city very well, and we were able to win that game and raise a lot of money for a good cause in the, in the process. And then last but not least, our department chaplains, we have three new department chaplains that have completed training, and now will be able to facilitate and work within the department and help us with our needs on our outreach to people who are in need for serious issues and cases that we deal with. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Councilmember Scarborough.
Hi, Chief Jolly. In light of today's occurrence in Texas, has it hasn't made it necessary for you to look into our RSOs at our schools?
Um. I'm not exactly sure what you're, what you're referring to. When we do have these things pop up occasionally, of course, our school resource officer is very much in tune with happenings that are across the country, and we try to reach out and increase our visibility around the schools during times like this, without trying to be too overbearing, but to give some of those reassurances to parents in the community that we're in tune with what's going on, and we're here to provide comfort and support.
Do we currently still only have one RSO for all our schools?
Oh, yes, yes, sir. We just have the one school resource officer, and he's primarily at the high school. However, he does handle calls for service at the other schools. The middle school and the elementarys.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kenny.
Hello, Chief Jolly. I had a question regarding what Councilmember Scarborough brought, brought up today. So I coach at the middle school, and Park Place has been the scene of a lot of incidents recently, and I actually had some coaches and kids that know I'm on council talk to me this afternoon. They're very upset, and some of them are in tears. And I did see a police presence at the school when I left tonight, but I'm just wondering what we are planning to do, or what your thoughts are on handling situations like this? And I guess I'm asking selfishly because I sort of would like to know how to respond to some of the people that are coming to me and asking. I know this is brand new, and I know you're already doing a lot, but it seems to be escalating, and I was just wondering if you had any thoughts to share tonight about some of these issues. Thank you.
We understand there's an uptick in some problems at the school. There's been some fights, and there's been some graffiti that's inappropriate in a variety of rate, ways, including having racial overtones. Like any other neighborhood, it's a community within each of these individual schools, and it's going to take that community to be able to really make an impact to solve some of these issues. And whether that's teachers impacting the culture, or being out in the halls, or being present, or addressing situations that they overhear. It, it is always best served by the community itself. Now, with that said, it also needs to be reported when something goes on, and that obviously is the school administration, and then subsequently the police department, if they feel it's appropriate. And I think that's something that we probably need to talk about in a greater sense, is that communication between the police department and the schools. Right now, there's some distance with the school leadership because of the situation that they are currently in, and we're always available to fill that void and, and step in when we're requested. But if you're going to change a culture of a particular community and institution of school, it's going to have to come from the people that are the stakeholders in that school.
I agree, and I thank you for your thoughts tonight.
But with, and again, Councilmember, very good points. We do have one school resource officer. That individual's got a huge load, and you know, that's probably part of a greater conversation as to what the future looks like in regards to staffing.
Thank you so much.
The questions for the chief? Thank you, Chief Jolly. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Jolly. Appreciate it. Next department report is from finance. Greg.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, am I, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Gamble, and good evening, council. Uh, included in your packet, starting on page one twenty-eight, is the finance department report for April. Couple of things we wanted to highlight for you is real estate excise tax continues to be really strong this year. In fact, it's trending towards seventy percent of the weighted average. So we're looking really great for the first four months of the year. And where that's really exceptional for us is the municipal campus funding strategy for bond reserves relies heavily on that real estate excise tax one. So great to see those coming in so strong. The other thing to highlight for you is on page one forty-eight of your packet, and it's the sales tax report for the food and accommodation. So there is a new graph that's now included that compares where the food and accommodation sales tax revenue that we see coming in, and it compares it against the CPI, the IPD, and also the population increase. So I think it has a little bit more of maybe some of the detail compared to what the population growth is, what potential growth for the IPD and also the CPI is. So those are the two items that I wanted to highlight for you in the report, and that concludes my report. If there's any questions.
Any questions for the finance team? Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here tonight. Uh, and next up, uh, community development report from, uh, Mr. Chriswell.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Um, you have the staff report in front of you. Just a couple of highlights I wanted to mention is community development staffs continuing to work on citywide projects. And also to improve our contracts and even updating the website. We continue to stay busy with building inspections. Uh, actually, it's kind of funny. We tied last month at a hundred and ninety. So I might have to check on my staff, see if they're just padding the numbers or not, but, uh, that was a joke for sure. Um, the other piece that I want to kind of communicate, which is a big win, is in your report, which is, uh, this document we created through the Washington Association of Building Officials. It is what is a building official? Um, that has been a year and a half in the making with multiple jurisdictions across our state, just to try and help, you know, new building inspectors, plans examiners, and even building officials, kind of what's the rules and responsibilities that we do for that? And it's also something that we wanted to make sure that we give to, um, you, you as the council and even boards and commissions, just to kind of understand a little bit about, maybe more what we do and some of those roles and responsibilities in the building department. So if you get a chance, please read through that. Um, we're gonna be doing a presentation and an annual business meeting through Wabo later, um, into, in July. And my understanding is we're gonna be getting kind of a statewide award for that. So that was a pretty big, pretty big lift, and it took a lot of people. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I've seen you. Nice job.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have mayor and administrative reports. First up is the city administration report. Ms. Knight.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Gamble. Uh, looking forward for the extended agenda. We are canceling the May thirty-first workshop and retreat, since it's not one that we need in order to prepare for the upcoming budget. Also looking ahead then to the first study session on July, or excuse me, July, June seventh. We're looking to cancel the public safety committee meeting and the regular study session. So I have a motion during the uh, city administrators report, if the council is interested in canceling that study session on June seventh. Looking forward then to June fourteenth, uh, we will have a legislative affairs committee meeting and they will continue to work on the updates to council rules of procedure. During the regular council business meeting, we do have the proclamation for Juneteenth. On the consent calendar, we have adopting the ordinance, amending the municipal code title twelve for public, uh, improvements that Mr. Roberts presented earlier this evening. Accepting the wastewater treatment plant roof replacement project and beginning the forty-five day lean period with John Landy and then contract amendment uh, with, um, Mr. Pallant and Ms. Hazard. So those are items that we have coming up under the consent calendar. We have a public hearing on the interim emergency UDR definitions that our planning manager Kate Turtleow will be bringing back, and then the Connor annexation, um, with Ms. Amy Bright. Under new business, we have first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two of the budget amendment with Ms. Hazard. And then the ordinance to amend, um, the municipal code regarding the stormwater management manual. That manual went to the planning commission on Monday and will be coming to council. And then the initial meeting for the North Forty-One annexation, again with Amy Bright, and then the fee resolution update, uh, with Ms. Hazard. And then finally, a proclamation for Father's Day. Hard to believe we're talking about mid-June already. I know. But there we go. That's the extended agenda.
All right, any councilmember, I see a light on, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you. Uh, I moved that we canceled the June seventh, uh, city council meeting.
That's fine by me. All right, moved by councilmember Hanford, seconded by councilmember Fulter to cancel the June seventh study session. All those in favor? Posed? Extentions, seven zip. All right. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Knight, city administrator report.
All right, and I have quite a few things this evening, so I apologize for extending the meeting this evening to cover these couple of items. Thanks. Uh, the Association of Washington Cities is having their annual conference on June twenty-first through the twenty-fourth. And the business meeting for the Association of Washington Cities is on the twenty-third. And we need voting delegates to attend. So I don't know if anybody is already interested and planning to attend. I believe that that is an in-person conference. And I'm trying to remember, City of Vancouver, I think, is where it's being held this year. So if you are interested in attending, let me know. Don't need an answer today, tonight? Let you take a look at calendars. Wanted to, uh, alert everyone, I have sent out a notice that County Councilmember Sam Low is hosting a District Five Roadshow on Thursday, the ninth, um, from six to seven thirty at the fairgrounds. And this is an opportunity for councilmembers and members of the public to come and take a look at the priorities that were identified in, um, councilmember Low's district for, um, spending the county's ARPA funds. So the county has divided ARPA funds up between county council districts. We received a visit from, um, staff from the Office of Recovery, the County Office of Recovery. I believe that they've collected everybody's ideas in the county, and now they're presenting those ideas at this roadshow. It does include food and childcare, if anybody needs, um, those services. Uh, and they, um, commit to having everybody out of there by seven thirty PM. So we're just encouraging um, our councils, boards and commissions, and members of the community to attend this meeting um, in order to weigh in on the city's priorities specifically, but, um, District Five, um, priorities in general. So if there's more information needed, let me know.
Quick question on that, I would have. So
Oh, forum, we'll notice if, if, yeah, wants to attend.
Quorum, and then the other would be, um, is it in-person only?
Uh, it is encouraged to be in-person. I haven't seen yet, uh, indications that there was gonna be a remote access, but we did ask, and at that time, they said that they would provide a link
Okay.
for remote access. So if you can't attend, um, as soon as I get that information, I'll send it out.
Okay, and that's on the ninth?
On June, Thursday, June ninth.
And we don't have any meetings between now and then, so notice has to go out how long before?
I think it's just, what, twenty-four hours in advance for a special?
Or do we just notice it regardless that there, it has the potential for a forum?
We've done that.
Okay, let's do that. That way it gives everybody the flexibility. If you find yourself and you can click on, don't want anybody to be, think, oh, I can't do it. Let's just do that.
All right, we will notice that then as a potential quorum of councilmembers. Uh, the next item I have, and I handed out a letter, uh, that we are proposing to send under council signatures to, uh, Community Transit Board of Directors. This is very similar to a letter that, uh, went out under Public Works Director Jacob Roberts' signature back in December and basically outlines the city priorities. So we're just looking for a head nod from council, um, whether or not that's something that I see had gone from across the board. Great. Um, so we will affix then your electronic signatures to that and go ahead and send it out. Thank you very much. Community Transit was asking for feedback from us by May thirty-first, and this will, um, achieve that deadline.
Appreciate that.
All right. Uh, next item I have is, uh, just some exciting news in general. The gateway signs have arrived. And so if you haven't had a chance yet to drive through the roundabout and, and check them out, they, they really are quite impressive. And I want to give, um, a shout out and some kudos to Scott Peterson and, um, the engineering team who've really took this project, um, away from the executive department as they should have and, and managed it properly. So a, a big thank you to all the work that has gone into that. Um, they've done a great job, Jacob. It's like, you better give me that project. True that, true that. But it, it really is quite impressive. And I didn't realize this before, but I believe that there's gonna be a section of that sign that's gonna be backlit. So there's some blue paneling, and I think that, you know, that backlighting is really gonna show through and, and be a, a great new gateway for the city of Monroe. Yeah, I'm looking forward to driving through that roundabout myself. Uh, next thing, I am going to be out of the office, uh, starting on Thursday, the twenty-sixth through Sunday, the fifth. Normally, I don't announce, um, when I'm going to be on vacation. My granddaughter's actually graduating from high school. So, um, yeah, we're very excited for, kind of, her to take the next step in, in her life. Uh, and since the mayor is out of town, um, I also wanted to let everybody know that, uh, Jacob Roberts is gonna be taking the helm in my absence during that time period. So, um, if you need anything, um, you can contact Mr. Roberts in my absence.
You missed the staff meeting.
He was certainly looking like it gave us a big surprise, didn't it? As if, as if we didn't have a conversation.
Yeah.
And we already did the, the motion for the study session. So.
Great. All right, thank you. Any questions? All right. Councilmember Fulter.
Um, we did say that we wanted to cancel the study session tonight, but I don't think that we said we wanted to study, that we wanted to cancel the public safety meeting as well. Do we need to do that as a technical? We usually don't take a motion to cancel the Excellent, because I'm not gonna show up for that. I just want to make sure. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, great. Good question. Okay, uh, then also in the reports is the mayor's report. There's a proclamation for Pride Month twenty twenty-two and a proclamation for Memorial Day twenty twenty-two, and then Monroe this week, volume eight, edition nineteen, and volume eight, edition twenty, that you can peruse on your own time there. Um, next item of business, oh, councilmember Hanford.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, I wanted to let you know that on, uh, Memorial Day, uh, I, I will be laying the flowers, uh, the wreath lane, uh, for Mayor Thomas, uh, that morning at nine AM. So all are welcome to come and join, uh, shouldn't take long. Um, just have a, a few moments together. And, uh, love to see you. If you can't make it, totally understand. It's a holiday, but everyone's welcome.
Do we have a, how many are maybe going, just in case we want to notice? Let's see, that's one, two, three. Oh, yeah, we need to notice that. Perfect.
Yes.
Back to you.
Thank you. I know, uh, Ms. Wyckoff went to the sides and I realized that I, I did share some kudos. We did have a big windstorm, uh, back last Wednesday. And a, a number of trees, um, fell all over town and including here on campus. Uh, but we did receive one, uh, kudo. So an individual um, community member reached out to us just to share that she was very, very impressed with our public works crew and how quickly they were able to respond and, um, you know, clean up the fallen tree and how neatly they left the work site when they, um, were done with the job. And I have to say, that was our experience too, on, here on the campus, when we had a good sized tree fall over that same day. We literally went into a meeting and came out an hour later and a, a giant tree was completely removed and gone. It was like the elves had come and just like done their magic work. So I just want to say thank you so much to the, um, Public Works Department and, and the crew that responded that day. They did a real phenomenal job.
That's warm. Did we let that one age and cut it up and sell it? That's some revenue. All right, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, next item, we do have a need for an executive session, potential litigation pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero subsection one, little i, and pricing of property pursuant to RCW forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero one B for fifteen minutes. Is that still the case?
I, I think we should, uh, call for twenty, because I think it's gonna take us five minutes. We've got a couple of people that are, um, going to be joining us online.
Okay.
as well. So I would start with twenty. Yes, um, attorney Zach Low.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Knight. Just to clarify that there are two executive sessions concerning real property. I'm, I'm sorry if I misheard the, the, um, deputy mayor, but it's, uh, for the purpose of considering the acquisition of a site, acquire real property and also the, the price at which property will be offered for sale or lease. That is technically required information under state law. Thank you.
Roger that, what he said. Okay, so we're going to break for, or we're gonna go into executive session, uh, for initially for twenty minutes. Um, are we staying here?
Uh, we are staying here.
Okay.
And, um, the remote folks are gonna join us on the monitor.
Okay, and we will be re, uh, coming back into open session, uh, to take action for, uh, nothing else to adjourn the meeting. So.
For the record, this is Jody Wyckoff, city clerk. The executive session has been extended five minutes.
All right, we are. Thank you for that. We are out of executive session, um, and there is being no other items, uh, on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. It has been moved by councilmember Scarborough and councilmember Davis, and seconded by councilmember Hanford to adjourn. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, all right, adjourned.
Well done.
Well, thanks.